Greg want me to read this off, that way he can learn more about how to do the amendments and stuff. But we got a couple items we need to amend on here for like the fuel prices and stuff. People want to know more about how to do that. If I might bring it up that way, he can know how to do this. It's six o'clock, regular meeting. Places to county owner, call order, call robe.
Johnson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
McCormick?
Yes. Number three, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember four, discuss the note to approve all July two thousand twenty-three minutes.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number five, discuss the vote to approve all July twenty-three bills for general fund.
I make a motion to approve. I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number six, discuss the vote to approve all July twenty-two, twenty-three bills for street and alley funds.
I make a motion to pay.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number seven, discuss the vote to approve all July twenty-two, twenty-three bills for fire department.
I make a mint to pay.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Number eight, discuss the vote to all, on all the quotes on AEDs for the fire department with possible purchase. You got them quotes?
Yes, please.
Okay, this, this AED is a.
It could be later.
It could be later. I couldn't think of what it was last night. We got a few quotes here. One of them is for twenty-one, forty-four. It's got an eight-year warranty on it with a three back, battery pack, operator meters, of course, and a medical. Fuel, I mean, it's got a lot of stuff on it, so. Here's another. Yeah, sent us, sent us, whatever. And it's for thirty-nine seventy. And it's got. Trying to read this one here. It don't have the, what the. Eight-year deal on it, it don't show, but it's almost four thousand dollars.
After talking with a member of the fire department, I was told that they was both the same machine. Has the upgrade that you can do for a few years. The price different, I don't know why the price difference, but my understanding it's the same machine.
And this, yeah, it's the same machine, and this and here has got a six-year warranty.
And those had how much?
An eight, an eight, thirty-seven, sixty-three, ninety-eight. And the cheaper one's got an eight-year warranty.
I haven't even seen the bids, so don't know where they come from, but I would recommend, I would recommend. Getting with somebody from Patford or somebody like that to get their recommendations, and they may come up with another bid on a different machine. I know they would like for us to have the same brand of machine, so if we go put pads on somebody. That we just hook, unhook our wires and our wires hooks right to them, I do know that, but.
I remember that last night.
A Patford or somebody like that, I'd have, I had no, I couldn't recommend anything.
You, you have anybody you can talk to?
Yeah.
To verify these brands and everything?
Yeah, it should be a, a coal, is it a coal or it starts with a K, I don't know how you say it, cool, cool, yeah.
I think it's a cool.
That, that's the brand they told me they had.
None, none of them is. No, this is a Zole.
Well, maybe it is a Zole.
Yeah, this one here is a Zole.
Yeah, this one here is a Zole three.
Okay, maybe it's a Zole, it should've been coal.
Yeah, all of them is a Zole.
Okay.
And they just different prices and different years, different warranties on them.
But like I said, I, I don't have the knowledge to say get this one or get that one, but since I haven't seen the bids. We could, we could do further research and give you a recommendation, I mean. I'm with him, if they're basically the same machine, I'll pay almost double for it, but.
That's what I was.
There could be something on this other one that is a whole greater benefit to you than the other one.
Well, the, the Centos, the one from the Centos, you can rent it or buy it. If you rented it so much a month, if you buy it, it's the thirty-nine hundred something dollars.
How much a month is it?
Uh, I don't know if that price is on there.
I get tagged on there.
Because that, that might be, well, eight-year warranty, you'd almost have to divide the cost of purchase.
Well, now that one there's only got the four, is that four or six?
Say, it don't say, well, how many year warranty on that one? It was the.
But that one there, that one there.
Thirty-seven's got the six-year and the other one here on the front had the eight-year.
So that's got a six-year, but that one there, you got an option to rent or buy.
Well, I mean, if they, depending on how much they cost to rent, at some point, you might be better off renting. Because you could, any little thing goes wrong with it, they're gonna give you a new machine.
Okay, is that, is that something we can count on you to look into to see which way you'd rather do?
I could bring you a recommendation back next month.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just put this on table, table this for next month. So, yeah, I'll make a motion on table this for next month.
I say.
Uh, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes. Number eight, vote to go on executive sessions, session as per title twenty-five O S, section three oh seven B, including the employment hiring. Employment promotion, demotion, disciplinary, and resignation of any individual salary, public office employee. Discuss that all needs to be discussed in executive session to give an employee more hours, eight to forty hours a week. Make a motion to go on that executive session.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Now, this is your department all. Okay, number ten, vote to go back in regular session. I make a motion to go back to regular session.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number eleven, vote on employment, employee to up to hours to forty hours a week. I make a motion to leave.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number twelve, discuss the vote to approve to purchase two sets of structured bumper gear for the fire department. Uh, what it is, we got two new members on there, we don't have no bumper gear.
And I, the last bumper gear come in, they give me a quote of thirty-three hundred and something dollars, and it may be up to thirty-five. But, that being said, it was, if I order them tomorrow, and they come out there, turn everything in, it'll be minimal, December. Or January or February, it's going, it's going to take four to six months to get them.
Okay, yeah, okay, those, those last ones did.
The last one was twenty-two hundred a set?
Yeah, we just now got them in.
Yeah, and it took, you know, six, seven months.
Yeah.
And, and along that line, y'all approved to purchase four pagers back in November, and I talked to Sharon, and she said. We need to have them, have an invoice to pay for by the end of September, is that right Sharon? And I'm, I may have to, at the end of September, I may have to bring it back to you if they don't, they still haven't come in.
That's what I understood, like you were going to go. Okay. Okay, can I just go ahead and pull on this one right here?
I vote to, uh, to get it, to order it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and jump down to twenty-two. And that's to appoint someone to fill in the positions, so that way we can go ahead and get them on here. So that way we can go ahead and get them on there, and that way they can get a feel of the rest of the meeting.
Okay. You also can't approve anything if you're abstaining.
Yeah. Uh, number twenty-two, discuss the vote to appoint someone filling the seats on the board of trustees. Uh, we got two people here right now, one is kind of helping, and the other one is from the, from the smoke shop. We don't have nobody else here, just one to sit in. Unless, Charlie needs to be said, no.
Charlie retired at sixty-two.
But, uh, that's the reason why we called back here to see how they felt about making people mad at them, and. If they willing to upset their friends and family about it and stuff. They said they was willing to put up with it for at least this year and six months, because we got that before election time. Like I remember like this, but anyway. Anybody in favor of putting Carolyn, just go ahead and.
I vote to put Carolyn phone.
Do we have to bend that?
Uh, how's your words, discussing vote.
Just to discuss them.
Rotating points off? You can just make a motion to appoint, name the person.
Okay, I make the motion, we, let Carolyn call them on warrant and trustees.
I say. I say.
Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Okay, you see it up there? Uh, we never did do it, it was for me.
Either which way you want to vote.
Yep, they got, they got oath to sign.
They got a sign, yeah, yeah.
No, that's all they got to say, just sign it, read it, sign it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, our second one is Bluna.
Patty?
Uh, Patty, from the smoke shop. Uh, anybody want to make a motion?
I make motion, the voter in.
I say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Do you have that oath?
I'm filling it in.
She's got some. The clipboard over there.
Where is this one just, uh?
No, the clipboard, she'll just have to take the names off of them.
See, I think it's in bottom two.
Yeah, just pull the names out of them right now. It is two. That is eight. These right here, this, this fine for it, you want me to read it? It'll say, this is up to office, state of Oklahoma. Oklahoma County, I blank, this on its word. That I will support, obey, and defend the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Oklahoma. And that I will not knowledge, receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable things. For the for you, performance, non-performance of any act or duties pertaining to my office, other than the competition. Allowed by law. I first swear that I will further faithfully discharge my duties as, city council. To the best of my ability. So, and then you'll sign it, sign it up here, and then. Sharon, she'll, she'll write this.
Last time I heard that, they put them, so much free to send them.
I went to Fort Bliss.
Oh, poor turkey.
Yeah, I went to Fort Bliss. Neil Dolesman, about eighteen others.
And one is Snow from Stigler.
Well, to Luke's, we have, like.
Indian, Robert Chapman.
And Robert Chapman?
And he's now old chap.
I was wondering what your quote is for, I don't. And the, yeah, plus the dammer, what's that quote for, they might. They just handed them over to her, and she'll take care of the rest of it. So, y'all officially, uh, take this or no?
Yes.
Okay, uh, since we got that, uh, we're, we don't, we don't, yeah. You can.
You can use it wherever.
Mark, mark where we're at, yeah.
And from thirteen.
Yeah, wait a minute, I just circled out to make sure I know where we're at here. Okay, number thirteen, discuss the vote to approve for the fire department to put in a set of steps on the east side of the building, the south door. You wanna?
We'd just like to put some steps like on the other end of the building, and. We don't know if we need to get approval for y'all, so we just put it on here, arrange for y'all.
How about the water line running down there, what are you planning on doing there?
Well, I think the way they wanted to do it, they cut the steps into that bank, you mean the water in the ditch?
Yeah, the, the ditch, that ditch.
I think it would just stay right where it's at, and the steps would be between where the dirt bank is.
You just go underneath your steps or through your steps?
No.
No, we'll go in front of the steps, we're just talking about.
The steps will be start right there at that.
Right there at that dirt hole.
The, where the dirt starts now, and just kind of cut in and then.
We didn't, I didn't know, and he didn't know, if we didn't bring it here, if we could just go and do it, or what, so we, we dot our i's across the t's and put it on there.
Is there a cost to it?
Yeah, there'll be a cost to it.
Well, I mean, what's the cost, because I just said that.
We don't know who to, we just discussed this with Harvey, and we don't know who to even ask. And, and we thought about getting some kind of, uh, they got some fiberglass steps. That, you know, preformed fiberglass step.
Yeah.
And if, we looked at maybe putting them in there, and then you wouldn't need just a couple sacks of quickcrete. And, and we could do the work ourselves.
The only reason why we decided to do that is that way, hold like old timey day, they don't have to walk all the way to the end, down there by the. By the fire shop, or by the insurance office to walk up, they just come out there, straight up and straight.
Well, and sometimes, some people use that side door getting to the fire trucks also.
Yeah.
I get it.
Because a lot of us don't have a fire program yet, and a lot of us don't have that button to open the doors up yet, so.
So, should we, basically, because it says to vote approve, but we don't have any cost on this, should this be tabled until next? Because we don't have the cost of it to vote on?
Could you vote that it's okay to do it?
And then we can bring, but that's what we can do.
Probably, probably won't be, you know, it probably hard to get a, an end point quote, uh, they've got their own funds, their own.
Less than five hundred dollars in it.
They got, they cut their own funds, their own account and stuff.
Uh, like we said, you know, we're just, we're just, we just put it on there, we didn't know if we had to do that, or if we could've just went ahead and done it, and. People come back in and say, well, you'll take that to city.
Yeah.
You know, and, so, it was like I said, we just, we just figured we, uh, dot our i's.
We would like approval to, to go ahead and pursue doing it.
Yep, absolutely.
And, and then we'll start talking about costs and, and see if we want to do the pre-fact, uh, steps, or we won't come in for concrete.
Yes, because you don't even have to think about handle, or, um.
Rails.
Handing rails as well, depending on how many steps there are.
The dimensions will be three.
If it's three, then you.
Yeah, I think it would just be three, like, you know.
But like I said, we mainly want just approval to work towards that.
Gotcha.
I vote to, uh, give them approval to move forward on that.
I also.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, I can't put it down. That was just a young man. I know, I know, I wanted it so bad, it's like jerking on that, get the pole. Okay, now we're at here, okay. Fourteen, discuss the vote to have D and R to fix electric poles.
What, what poles are you talking about, PSO on, or shouldn't I? Were they, were the, were the, my, the two poles in front of my building was taken out by the driver here a while back? Uh, now the electric does not work to run our Christmas lights and stuff from them poles down.
Which are about right up here.
Yes, so what, we need D and R to come out to fix that, to get, uh, the electric back up, that way our Christmas lights. And our town will be lit up for Christmas, uh, which is, uh, you know, due to the driver hitting the poles.
Yeah, they didn't, no, plug in, no, they didn't.
There's a.
Uh, is there any recourse y'all could take through the driver's insurance company?
I've already tried on the buildings, he's an Indian, there's no insurance. Uh, I've had no luck so far, and, but, uh, good luck on that one.
And on those poles, they'll have to be put back the same, because Christmas lights we have.
Yes.
They fit these right here.
Okay, now, now, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have D and R to put them back the same, but the electric company still might want to raise them to a higher level. Uh, that's coming from PSO themselves, we've got no input on that one. You know, we can put them there and use them, but they're, they're, they are actually talking about raising them to a higher.
I don't know if our Christmas lights fit, or fit.
Oh, so you're saying the Christmas lights won't work?
See, they got the, the brackets here, and, uh.
And I think the county employees were also concerned that, uh, they use the backhoe or whatever. And if you raise them higher, they're not going to be able to, y'all, they're gonna go.
We, we can bring that up to PSO, but, uh, why, you know, I can't guarantee you nothing, we can bring it up to them. But I can't guarantee you if we can get that changed or not. Cause I mean, uh, PSO, the, uh, D and R, all gonna be here on the same day, and they're gonna say what's gotta be done, what don't. PSO is gunning to raise them, we've already talked to them a little bit about it.
What's their, what's their, for raising, I don't understand.
Because during Old Timers Day, uh, everybody is using their electricity, and that's free electricity, only free for our use on the Christmas lights. So they want to raise them to guarantee them that nobody's getting free juice any time of the year, whether it be Old Timers Day or any other time. And, and, and I've talked to them about that and everything, uh, so far, we ain't getting very far, we can still continue to try to talk. But, uh, I, we just, you know, we can't wholly guarantee that, because we ain't getting nowhere with them yet.
Well, that, that bill probably some readjustments, I'm seeing, it is made by the school there.
Got it.
Christmas lights, these brackets here.
Yes, sir.
They was made by.
Is that, is that something that we can make work if we can't get nowhere with it?
The county couldn't do it, I don't know what you, what, county, because the county's got a backhoe, and they got a, they can set it in.
So, so you're saying the backhoe won't even raise them that high to do?
They already raised it high.
Well, there's one there here they can't get down, because it was put up too high.
They're talking about raising them up.
They're talking about raising them, uh, nearly up, up to the top.
And was y'all talking about, they was gonna take out the one up here.
They're, they're gonna, that their old breaker box, they're gonna remove that completely, it's gone. That's down there by, uh, by Gary's building, there's supposed to be an old breaker box, supposed to be another, you know, but they're supposed to, they're gonna remove that completely. There's a plug-in down on that pole of Gary's, it's down ground level.
That's, that's the veterans thing, dark.
They're gonna remove that.
That tombstone or whatever it is.
Okay.
If you read it, that's dedicated to all veterans that serve, and everything that.
But there's a, there's, there's a breaker box there, something they're talking about.
Breaker box there and a plug-in.
I don't know what, what they're talking about.
I don't either, but that's what they're talking about, taking that old breaker box out there, so.
You don't know about that, don't you?
That old breaker box, it's in front of Gary's building.
But they're, they're talking about removing that breaker box and that plug-in, do you think there's any way we can talk them into leaving them where they're at?
The one on the side?
See, he had, they put that in in two thousand, two thousand and more, so they paid for it, he always probably tell them how much it cost.
Oh, that breaker box and stuff?
No, I mean, they're not messing with the monument.
No, they're just, they're taking that.
Talk about their, see, we put a.
Yeah, there's a monument up there.
Used to put a, and so they broke all the rails around it, they used to put a reef up there for veterans. If you read that, that says what the, about the veterans.
But no, they're not talking about messing with that, they're just talking about taking the breaker box out of it.
This affect this in any way?
Do what?
This doesn't affect the veterans monument in any way, right?
No, it won't affect that, but the only thing real is, is y'all put, and we got done, put, uh, like, uh, reef up there, and with last run.
Oh.
And that little frame around it.
Oh, yeah, that, that ain't affect, so.
Would you do solar lights in them?
Do what?
Do solar lights instead, if they took the box out, I mean, is there a way to do something like that, or it'd be lit up at night?
Uh, we can find, what date is these, or are they supposed to be, do you have any idea?
Huh?
Week, next week?
Uh, I mean, we can, we can talk to them and see what we can get done, uh, we can get with you on the date, and you can be present. Uh, but I do know PSO will be here, D and R will be here, and, uh, you know, PSO, D and R's gonna do the work, the bill's on us. But PSO's gonna charge.
The brackets, if you go up, you'll have to move the brackets.
That's why, that's what we're just gonna have to talk to them about, see if we can get them to just leave them where they're at. Uh, you know, and, you know, cause I mean, just like I said.
Yeah, I didn't know nothing about it until they brought it to my attention.
People's got to be lifted up to rob juice, all we need to do is verify that nobody gets up there to get juice. Maybe we can get, maybe we can, uh, get them to go for that, I mean, I can't guarantee nothing, but, cause I mean, they're, they're gonna fix them for us, we gotta pay for it. But, uh, they are upset about people robbing juice in the past, and they're wanting to raise the plug-ins. And they want to remove that there breaker box and that plug-in down there, cause it's ground level.
We won't be, I mean, ESA will not be using any electric come back.
Yeah.
They'll have to get it out of, from those buildings, you know, like, you.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that's, and that's what we're, no, because, you know, just like I said, PSO pretty stern on, on what they want. So I mean, I don't know if we can get in no way, I can't guarantee nothing on that.
Well, probably if they move them up.
Yeah.
I don't know, but they probably won't be no Christmas lights, because there's no way for us.
That's the reason why we're gonna get out. That's the reason why we're gonna get out, you telling them, get that way maybe.
Just tell them if they move them up, I had to tell them I can put Christmas lights up and things like that.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the capabilities, I guess.
Yeah, it'd be good. There's about four people that worked, worked for twenty-five year.
Maybe we get some more people up there to talk to them about it and then may, maybe just leave them alone.
Yeah.
I mean, like Greg said, you know, they've been talking about it and I didn't know nothing about it till he brought it to my attention, so.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of people like hanging out with a cord into the.
Yeah.
So, yeah, all, all we can do is try and go from there, uh and see what we can do.
This will affect us out here, they raise it up for the Christmas light because they, they'll as well too, because they will be getting out. Get higher enough to fit the cord, you might put a cord in running there.
It, but it, it will affect the Christmas tree lighting out here, right?
Yeah, it will, because you can't get up.
Yeah.
With raking, the county can just go so high.
Yeah.
And it gets dangerous, well, they can't go, I don't think, they're one there and they can't get to them now.
Well, we, we would appreciate it if you would be there as well, that way, uh let's say if they do want to raise them and we can't talk them out of it. Maybe y'all can come up to an agreeance on how hard to raise them, which would work for you and them. And we know, we don't know that distance, what we can go and what we can't, but maybe we can all come up with some sort of agreements. If, if that works for you.
We'll just, we'll just have somebody to keep you informed when they're gonna be here.
Yes.
The box y'all talking about, I don't want box to plug in yet.
Uh I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We won't, they won't be using that ESA.
They said it sits in front of Gary's building.
On that pole, right by the plug in that we're talking about? What does it actually go to, the breaker box?
Where's that breaker box go?
Those plug ins.
That plug in, that's it?
All of them.
Oh, it goes to all these plug ins, that plug in and all these plug in, but they're gonna do away with that, hook into direct because it's free juice for us. For the Christmas lights, so uh they're gonna remove that box, hook it up direct, so they'll always be hot, uh.
I didn't know vision breaker box service affected all of them.
Yeah. It's an old one, always out of date, and that's instead of replacing it, they're just gonna take it out.
All right, I mean, that'd be fine if they hook it up direct, but I thought it's direct now.
Now, eh, it, it's, they're, breaker box there goes to them, uh and it's, and it's out of date.
Anybody for?
What is the cost?
No, it'll maybe, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be something they do.
Before we decide, this is before we decide to buy they want to buy it or.
I make a motion to uh get D and R down here and uh get it done.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lerna?
Yes.
Okay, number fifteen, discuss the vote to purchase twenty gallon hydraulic, uh we're fixing to start. And we already have been using the.
Why would you need them, this, this maintenance?
Well, it is forty dollars for a five gallon jug and we.
You got it, that cheap, where?
Uh he's found it at Atwood's.
Atwood's.
For forty bucks, uh.
You better check your qualifications on that, because they, they, some of that is not compatible with all machinery.
Okay.
Which we've always used it in tractors and stuff that way, yeah, we've always used it in the older tractors.
Yeah.
But the old, no, I mean, just in case we go a line, like we did on the hy- hydraulic children. The only one we'll actually have to worry about getting compatible is on the escalator. Is the only thing we'll have to worry about getting compatible.
Well, we just wanted to put that on the agenda because, you know, forty bucks, five gallon jug, stuff like, you know, we're asking for twenty gallons. And I know it's still lower, but.
It's a little over two fifty.
Yes.
So, I mean.
It's just a nothing, okay.
It's just a, you know, on the, don't you have a crush tease on the tip, so.
And uh I vote to uh get it, uh so we can continue to use our machinery.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lerna?
Yes.
Okay, number sixteen, discuss the vote versus fuel, diesel fuel off road or yellow fuel at three thirty-five a gallon? I called today, one of the places that I got this price for, they went up to three dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon. That's no taxes. I called the other place that was a little bit higher than the last time and they're at three forty-six for the on road and three forty-five for the off road. So there's only a penny difference, and there's a penny difference, and they told me that if we get it voted in, to give them a call and they would set it at that price. And like we need it.
And how much?
It's a two hundred gallon minimum. Uh I will have to get this amended on the price and the gallons.
Okay.
Uh so I make a motion, we amend this to three dollars and forty, forty-six cents? Which one do y'all want to do, the all red or the yellow, I mean.
If, if the red, if the red's only a penny difference, I, I mean, I'd, I'd say just get the good diesel, it's only a penny difference.
I agree.
And uh, and I vote to uh, to get it, uh.
Well, I gotta, gotta get this amended first, uh I make a motion, amend this to get the yellow on road fuel. Uh. There's only a penny difference.
Or the price, did you say the price was different?
It's like.
Three thirty-six then?
Yeah.
Uh.
Y'all better on the red.
Y'all listen to that. And uh I vote to. We need to vote on amended.
You vote to amend this?
I vote to amend it.
Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick? And Lerna, yes.
Okay, now I make a motion to vote it as amended.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lerna, yes.
Okay, now I need to make, make a motion to amend the price to three forty-six a gallon instead of three thirty-five a gallon.
And price from what?
Uh from three thirty-five to three thirty-six and that's a two hundred gallon.
Three forty-six.
Three forty-six.
Okay.
And that's how you turn up every, every other day.
Three forty-six.
Yes, yeah, three, three forty-six.
Okay, you, you motioned it? Am I seconding it?
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Uh Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lerna, yes.
And then you put that on there to, to run a gallon, right?
To a gallon, yes.
Because that is. Okay, uh but so as soon as, get a chance if we. Okay. Uh number seventeen, discuss the vote to approve the house numbers for Chalk Town housing. Uh they wanted us to put this on here because they didn't know if we needed to keep the numbers the way they are, one through, one through ten, wasn't it? I think that's how it was, you got that paper? I think it was one through ten.
It was one.
That's how they were wanting to keep them, or however we needed, or however they wanted us to do it, or just keep it at one through ten.
And this is for the nine one one.
And I don't, I don't care, I mean. All it is is for the nine one one deal.
So the house number would be one through ten? No one?
They wanted to, they wanted to know if we wanted to change the numbers or just leave it do, like. House one at, whatever, street that is second and grand, at the housing book. The nine one one, if they did a nine one one call saying, uh. House ten.
The Chalk Town Development area, kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
But right there's the numbers that they're wanting to.
What, what is your nine one one coordinator, have they contacted them?
I think they have.
Cause I know they, they have to, they have to turn in what they say the address is.
But I think that, I think that's just more or less of what they wanted us to take a vote in and take them, but I think it's gonna be different.
Nine, nine one one has set an address for it, it'll, it'll say, at the end it'll say house one, house two.
Or, or unit one, unit two.
Unit one, yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
They'll set their own address for it.
And they just wanted us to take them, discuss it. Oh, nine one one wanted us to do it.
So it would be, okay, so I, this is what I wanted to know, so if, it's like an apartment more or less, so.
That's all they, to, to the, to the, to the apartment, so they're.
So it'll have its address, but it'll be like a unit one, two, three, four.
Yes.
Yes. So all the way up to ten?
Yeah.
Unless they build, unless they come up with ways to build more houses.
Then they would.
Yeah, but so far it's just ten units. I make a motion, we, we're then, one through ten.
I second that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lerna?
Yes.
Number eighteen, discuss the vote to put the Gmail back on Doug's phone so he can get, receive locations or locates. Uh right now, if he gets any locates, like a weekend, he can't get them. He'll have to wait till Monday to come and get them.
What, what are you saying?
And if it's an emergency locate, then we just, they just gotta wait.
Yeah.
I mean, because he don't have no way to get it for him to get, get them off of, if he's down there and they got an emergency, that they need to get it located. And he gets it, boom, he go down there and get it located.
Does anybody else have this?
Nope. Yeah, it's just be on Doug's.
Okay. Oh, no, there, I, I didn't see what.
All we gotta do is.
I just did, I was wondering if there would be anybody else add to that as if needed, okay.
I vote to put it back on Doug's phone.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lerna?
Yes.
Okay, uh nineteen, discuss the vote to approve the victory worship. We have a recovery out loud event at the city hall parking lot, September twenty-third with live band and.
Praise.
Praise worship. Sharon brought this to my attention the other day, and I don't have no problem with it.
I generally don't have a problem with it, but would other people have a problem with it?
They have never had no problem.
I think we won't, I mean, I'm just saying.
I mean, they've had things here in this part before.
We've had same in.
Absolutely, and they have.
I have no problem with it, I mean, at all, I mean, cause the elderly people's gonna be here. Well, I mean, they're gonna be set up.
Well, myself, I don't think we have enough church, pledge allegiance and stuff out loud.
Yeah.
I vote to let them have it.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lerna?
Yes.
Uh number twenty, discuss the vote to approve the month immediately, the third, Thursday of the month, starting September twenty-third. Uh we discussed this a while ago and uh we're gonna take no, no, no action on it, we're just gonna leave it. Yes, we're just gonna leave it as it is right now. Okay, uh twenty-one, discuss the vote to renew the harvest contract, what this is, it's on that escalator. And we have got to have it on there every year since it's a uh purchase lease.
Oh, okay.
The first study was June, wasn't it? And we didn't do it.
Okay.
We've got to get it on there since it's a purchase lease, we've got to get it approved. So I make a motion, we approve to remove the harvest contract.
I second it. Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Okay, we done twenty-two, uh twenty-three, discuss the vote to repair lights on the Dodge Charger replacement vehicle. Uh I talked to Kevin last night, they have got to replace, what was, what lights was it?
On the Charger, it's, it's almost every one of your side, your, your marker light. Uh either the red's not working or the blue's not working, uh they both contracted back and forth, you know, as a display. But they just can't replace one side, they have to replace the whole deal, so the Charger, that's when I have their.
Yeah, it's seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
It will stand, um. I don't, I don't really understand why there's so much.
Yeah, it's all sort of.
Labor on that because all they gotta do is cut the wires, there's blossoms.
And is this the only estimate that we have generally, if it's more than five hundred, we generally get more than one.
That, that's the only place I.
Yeah, that's the only place that.
That's why.
There's a place in Podo that did it before, but they did, they have to show. And this is one the sheriff's office used, we're all there using, so they, they referred me to.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's major, I mean, we gotta, we gotta have it.
Absolutely, it has to be done.
I mean, after we're approving everything, I mean, he may get those qualities cheaper than that.
Yeah, I'm, I can talk to him.
No more than seven oh seven thirty-four then?
Yeah. But I can give them cause some slack and some labor.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's, that's, that's a safety on there. On their emergency lights, that's a safety on them.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lerna? Oh, yes.
Uh twenty-four, discuss the vote to add and remove lights on the Ford police vehicle.
The front light bar on my vehicle, if I'm driving in the evening time, morning time, and I'm driving towards the sun. Somehow the sunlight is activating my front light and pulling people over.
Yeah, it's just like it's got a solar on it.
It does the same thing to, to.
It's just kinda funny, but.
It's not a yawnie, okay.
Yeah, he done it to me too.
Yeah.
He said the other, he told me last night that, obviously you're in there, if something, something in there that heats up and them lights will come on. He said dispatch called and said, hey, you got your lights on? And he said, no, they said, yeah, we gotta call and say your lights is on.
I was transporting prisoner two, DR, he gets stitches and.
And he got.
Going over and I'm like, what's going on, that lady, the, the nurse lady that was riding with me, she's like, you got your lights on? I'm like, no, they're on.
But they was on. Bar.
So it should be covered in some way.
Well, it, that's, that's one of the things, they're gonna look into it.
I have it covered first.
The Podo agency, I think, is the one that installed them, right?
Yeah.
So they're shut down, so we can't, there's no way we need it.
I wouldn't recommend them anyways.
We, uh, obviously, we're not going to.
He said that he can stand in front of it and shadow it, then it'll go right off.
So you're just talking about removing them and leaving it off?
No.
No, they're gonna put another one back on.
Sure, they, the quote is to, to remove that one and add, add the same, same one back to it, and I, I called them back, I'm like. If this one's malfunction, why would I want another, you know, so they's like, well, let us go in there and see if we can repair it. And if they can repair whatever's causing that, if they can, then well, that'll give me another option, that's one of the most expensive lights.
Yes.
The light bar that I'm wanting to add is one out of our room.
And it's already got brackets.
It's already got brackets, but they quoted us this on making brackets and everything, so that's gonna be knocked off. It's already got brackets, but they quoted us on making brackets and everything, so that's gonna be knocked off there.
Right now, right now, the quality got twelve hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. But like he said, this bracket in here is gonna go in the back window.
Uh-huh.
And it's already got brackets, they gave us a price of fixing it with four brackets.
And how much are the brackets?
That, that cuts into your labor, they, and he's already tipped me, he's like, hey, we, we need to cut you those light and the labor we can. So I, I, I think I can get that knocked down, I don't think it's gonna be any more than that price right there.
Okay, and this is somebody that.
The labor on it was seven hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah.
So what are you wanting to do, move it to this light bar or you want it this light?
Um, I want, when I'm standing behind a vehicle, all I have is my little lights, so I'm.
At least I have another blinker, I don't want it full.
Yes.
An additional light bar.
They need to have that.
Yeah.
And then he's got, he's got a couple, he showed me last night, he's got a couple on the side, one on the side of the vehicle that's on the blinking red, one on the front that's blinking red, I have to replace them too.
So this is, this company, these are all brand new lights, right? And so we can't even try to get any money back from them.
We took off.
These right back here is the one we took off directly.
Oh, okay, I got you now.
But the ones we're gonna install that's out are brand new lights, yes, and they, um, but they won't have to do any wiring on that part, that's all they have to do.
All they gotta do is take them out, put it out.
Okay, I got you, so.
What, what is the warranty on them?
He has not, and I will, I will find that out. Uh, Sheriff like said, I spoke to three people in the sheriff's department, they've done every one of their units, and they stand behind their stuff, I mean.
I vote for repair. But he said, he said that he's gonna talk to them since we don't have to have no brackets to see what they can do about the labor.
So are we gonna see for no more than the price that's on here?
I, I vote to repair the police lights.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Double seven.
Double seven. Thank you.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lorna?
Yes.
Uh, twenty-five, on business. That been another thing, if you have any old business left over there.
That one we discussed.
Twenty-six, new business. Twenty-seven, I make a motion we adjourn it.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lorna?
Yes.
Let's, we're gonna go ahead and go straight to T W A, that's seven twenty-seven. Uh, regular meeting. Uh, call to order, call roll.
Johnson?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Here.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lorna?
Here.
Uh, number three, discuss the vote to approve all minutes for July twenty, twenty-three.
I vote to approve all minutes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
And Lorna?
Yes.
Number four. Vote, discuss the vote to approve all July twenty, twenty-three bills for water.
I vote to approve all meals for July.
I second it. Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lorna?
Yes.
Number five, discuss and boot to approve all July twenty, twenty-three bills for street, center front.
I vote to approve all July twenty, twenty-three.
He, he was like, dig on the button?
I second it. Okay, Allison?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Starston, I mean, I mean, I mean, Lorna. Sorry. Yes, sorry. I don't have the name draw on this one. I'm looking at the names, it's, it's Starston.
Number six. Vote to go in executive session per title, twenty-five O S, section three oh seven B. Discuss employment, hiring, employment, promotion, demotion, displearing, or resignations of any individual salaries, public office or employment to discuss and employment, performance, and termination. Uh.
No action.
We're not gonna go back there because she is not here. So we're gonna go ahead and move forward on that.
So no action on this?
Yes, we're not gonna go back there.
I mean, no one makes a motion to go.
Yeah. Uh, number twenty, number seven, vote to return. Uh, number eight, vote on the performance and termination, or tardiness of unemployment, taking no action on that. Number nine, discuss the vote to accept Ruben Ball's resignation. I make a motion we accept his resignation.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lorna?
Yes.
Yeah, he voluntarily come in and, and come in as hell. He, he come in here after being rolled up, um, and he thought he's key that. Okay, number ten, discuss the vote to appoint someone to full composition seat, we've already done that. Uh, number eleven, discuss the vote to renew R R S contract, uh, go the same way on that one. All, all voting for it. Uh, number twelve, discuss the vote to remove month of meeting, the third, we've already done that, we're gonna keep it the same. Uh, number thirteen, discuss the vote to purchase four pressure meters. Uh.
I thought we did this.
We did, but we got fourteen of them to replace.
Oh, okay, so we're doing another session, okay.
So we're just buying four at times, so it ain't, it's costly, it ain't.
Uh, do you remember what the price on that was? I bet they had about sixteen hundred dollars. Or that was for eight of them, that is for eight of them, so that'd be added price.
So, okay.
I make a motion we go ahead and purchase four.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Lorna?
Yes.
Number fourteen, old business. Number fifteen, new business.
I got a question, we talk about new business like we got something that we wanna bring to your attention or?
Yeah, new business would be like on the other side, I mean, but, I mean, if you got something that needs to be brought attention, yeah, you can, you can bring it to our attention.
They, the old chief, what, what was her name?
Lea.
Lea. Lea, I guess got a grant for new radios, they're sitting in there on top of our filing cabinets. Uh, when you, when you get a grant like that, you're supposed to.
Supposed to use it.
You're supposed to use those grant.
Remember we mentioned that the dawn?
Oh, yeah, you mentioned that to me last night.
We didn't have to.
You got a certain period of time you have to use those, and, uh, that's why they grant them to you. Mine has been real staticky, I don't know what's wrong with it, they said they, they can look at it when they're down there, put in the wires, but.
This is your new radio?
Yeah, the two, we got two new radios, we got two new, uh.
Antanas?
Antenna break, you know, the.
Yeah.
Bracket form and everything.
They usually don't charge nothing to the refrigerator and.
Yeah, it shouldn't be unplugged, plugged, and get back in.
And you put the other one in mine, we need to, that way they're using.
So that is something that y'all can replace yourself, or that's something needing to be replaced?
Well.
I'm gonna talk to this guy tomorrow, and I'm gonna see if he can cut us a break on some of the labor, and install these radios in, in his place and keep the thing the same price on.
Because, you know, the reason why we really want, don't want to take and have the responsibility of them doing it.
Yes.
In case something shorts out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I was going there and did something and shortened it.
Yeah, I get you.
Everything in there, that's, that's three thousand dollars, you know.
Well, if they usually replace these for free, uh, are you gonna, you ain't just gonna see if he'll replace these and keep the price the same, you gonna see if he'll still come down? Or are you still gonna negotiate?
Yeah, I'm still gonna negotiate, cause he's already, he's, he's been taking them at least twice a week, so, hey, I said, well, council meeting, you gonna have them yet?
Well, you know, these are right here, you know. Are you free, free out of that, he's the hooker, maybe he'll still come down and still install radio.
Well, he's gotta, he's gotta take all that out anyways, to get into the wiring, so why not just put them in?
There you are.
Yeah, we gotta take them out and, I mean, and, and like I said, it's gotta be.
I don't get that.
So I mean, why can't you just take, why can't you just take them straight out, put them all straight back in?
Exactly.
I mean, he may charge us fifty dollar labor or something like that, but I, I don't understand that either, if he's already in there, you know what I'm saying, but.
And I agree with you.
And I'll, I'll discuss that with him tomorrow, uh.
So how fast do you need to have them?
It's been, we've had them for.
So.
A while.
A while, since last year. We've had them for a while, and we ain't been.
Well, the thing is, if, if, if you go through a grant and, and they grant you something, and then you try to go through them again, and they're like, well, how did this product work before you left them? Well, we need to sell it, but they're not gonna give you.
Yeah, they're not gonna give you no more grants.
Saying, so, but I'm saying, do we need to do a special, can we do it now, or we need to do a special session so they can get it faster?
We don't have to do a special.
If he gets, if he gets this gentleman to do it and still cut this price or keep it the same. Might as well just, I mean, it ain't gonna cost us no extra than what this already is. Or, or it can still come down, cause this same guy's doing this, he says gotta have the radios out, you know, if he's gotta have them out, might as well just put a new one in. So what he's gonna attend, what he's gonna try to do is get him to do it and either still cut this price down or do.
Well, like he said, like he said, he's gonna have all that out anyway.
And something's wrong with mine anyway, cause like I said, I was sitting here on Main Street on that call last night, and I was reading off the numbers to her, and she's like, okay, one, you're ten, you're ten one, you want to repeat that, and you're real fuzzy, so I don't know, I don't understand, our radios should reach from here to.
Yes.
To wherever, you know.
I could've told him it could be a loose wire or anything, but if we got new radios and stuff back here, then they need to be used.
Okay, I see what you're going for, I just wanted to double check on everything.
We need to find out, we need to find out if he can give us all.
I would say, I'd say have them installed if you, uh, see if it'll come down to the price or.
That would be part of the police department maintenance anyway, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So it wouldn't have to.
Regardless, regardless, I mean, we didn't go back in, we gotta have them used, or then we won't get no more grants.
Absolutely.
If we have to get that guy to come back out, if he comes out for this, and we gotta get him to come back out, cause we didn't get it done here, and it's an extra charge, cause it's, he comes out to do it.
So I'm trying to get it lowered on.
Right, I got you.
Trying to get the labor lowered on each, each unit, and way if it does, you charge a hundred dollars, then we'll cut.
You gotta go back up to.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, do we need to, does that need to be added?
No, we don't have to go back in.
You just, you just do the basic game where the cabinet.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you when I find out.
Okay.
I stick with him waiting for us to go on something like that.
Oh, oh, on the new business, or old, you know, new business, we into the business here, are we?
Yeah, we were on new.
Uh, Doug broke my attention. Window's broke in the office right there. Uh, we're gonna have to figure out, uh, what's gonna cost to replace it. And how, how it got broken, I have no idea. I don't know. I have no idea.
Is this just a crack? Or does it look like somebody hit it?
It's, it's, it's cracked up and started cracking back down.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
I got you.
Cracked all the way up.
Yeah.
It gone.
And. There somebody shot it with a P D gun or something.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know how it did it or nothing like that, uh, but it's, it's broke, so we're gonna have to get a price on it, so.
Okay.
And, and on the new business, we need to update our bids on our roof.
Yeah, it's either that or we're gonna have to take and, uh, go to quota on that tar stuff and go out there and cake it again because that room in there. It's all. It is salt for it again. And it took how long, me and you done this? Yeah.
This was a long time.
No, I'm talking about how many years ago?
Four hours. That's it?
It's been at least three years ago since me and Doug got up there and caked this stuff on there, and this is now starting to make the end.
Yeah, okay.
So, and then we're gonna have to go back and see if we can change the process and stuff again.
Okay.
Get back up there and do this again, so. Uh, any, any other business? Number sixteen, adjourn, I'll make a motion for adjourn.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Copman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Yes.